Okay, I'm gonna go back and look at the workshop. And stop and tell.
Good afternoon, briefing meeting for June 20th is called to order. The first item on the agenda is Exceptional Student Education Comprehensive Coordinated Early Intervening Services with Ms. Duncan. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Can you use the microphone?
Yeah. Maybe you're talking and keep talking and it should come on.
It's gonna come on? Okay.
Maybe shift to the other one?
I heard it. Once you start talking, it'll come on.
So if I just start talking, will be good?
It should be okay.
Okay. So I'm gonna talk to you today, good afternoon, about disproportionality and some work that we've done this year in ESE, and then some work that we'll be doing next year. Hi. Okay. So what data shows that many areas where, thank you.
You're welcome.
We're going in the right direction, and this is due to some of the processes and systems that schools have in place. There were areas that we were monitored on this year, and I have some of that information for you. So the first area is graduation and dropout. And you can see, this is just a snapshot from 2011, 12 to this year, where right now, the graduation rate is 84.1, and for ESE is 73 percent, where it was 40.8 percent in 2011. So we haven't completely closed the gap, but made great progress in that area. The same for dropouts. When you look at our dropout information from 1617 to April 2019, you can see that we've had a significant reduction in the number of dropouts who are students with disabilities. Least restrictive environment is another area that is monitored, and that's where students are served to the greatest extent with their non-disabled peers. And this information shows that we have not met the state target, but each year, we're getting closer to that target. This year, the target was 83 percent, and we were at 80.5 percent. Next year, the target is 85 percent, and that is the highest the target will go in the state. It will not be higher than 85 percent. For restraint reporting, from July to May, we had a 29.3 percent decrease in restraints. The average number of students was 22, and last year, we had 38 schools. This year, we had 36 schools. And you can get a snapshot of where across elementary, middle, and high that most of our restraints are occurring, and also at what time of year. So we can see in September, and then again at March, that we want to continue to do some work with schools and staff on de-escalation and strategies to help support using things other than restraint whenever possible. There will be some changes to restraint reporting. As of March 22nd, 2019, all students who are restrained have to be reported. Previous to this, we were only directed to report students who were either 504 or had an ESE eligibility, and now all students will be reported. So we know that that will have some impact on our numbers, but we talked to the Florida Department of Education, and they anticipate this across counties. And this will be reported into our district application, which will be new for us next So in those areas where we were monitored, we show that we're making progress. The work that we're doing is working. The strategies that we are putting in place are working. Our work with agencies such as Project Search, which some of you at the Galasana work, so you can see the work there, for transition and opportunities for students. But we do have some areas that we are going to be looking at closely next year. And IDEA requires that states identify districts who have a significant disproportionality in special education. So that is when any one group is identified or placed in a restrictive setting or disciplined at a much higher rate than their peers. And once you are identified with a significant disproportionality, there are some requirements. When I took this position in July, we got a call about two weeks later from the Florida Department of Education, that they were coming in in September for a site visit. They did come at that time and shared some of this data with us. We told them some things that we were working on in some of our efforts through this year. They pulled the data for some of our areas in October. So most of the data on these next two areas you're gonna hear is a year behind. So they will pull the data for this again in October of 2019. When they met with us in September, we, they shared information and some of the thresholds, and since they've come in September, some of that has changed. So as we go through, I'll share that information with you. But our requirement now is to determine the root cause, to look at our policies and practice related to significant disproportionalsities, and then also a reallocation of IDEA funds. So we'll talk a little bit more about that when we look at our data. We have to do some proactive activities. There's a training component. And then the bottom line of all this is that we have to provide services and supports to students before they are ESE. So when a student starts to have an issue, whether it be academic or behavior, they want us to provide more assistance and support at that time, to see if we can minimize unnecessary eligibilities and not just look as the way for all students to get help is through ESE. So we definitely recognize some opportunities and some really positive parts to that piece. We will have staff specialize working with students who are EBD, and new, some new and additional staff, which I'll again talk about more towards the end. So the first area that we were looking at, where we demonstrated a significant disproportionality, is the identification of students who are EBD, who have an emotional or behavioral disability. So each group has a risk ratio where they start at one. If the risk ratio is two, that means you're twice as likely to be identified or disciplined as your peers. At three, you're three times as likely, and so on. The goal is for all groups to be at a one. When the Department of Education came in September, the risk ratio was shared at a 3.5. In addition to that, the Florida, actually, the U.S. Department of Education had regulations for states related to this. But they had postponed that, those regulations, and states didn't have to put anything in place. And then in March 7th, 2019, so just a couple of months ago, there was a judicial action, and they did ask states to move forward with those regulations. So there were two major changes for us. One, the threshold went from 3.5 to 3.0, and then the postponement of the implementation of the regulations for all states. Right now, our risk ratio for students who are Black or African-American to be identified with the EBD is 3.41. So that is over the 3.0 threshold, so that's the disproportionality. And then even beyond that, we're still looking to reduce that closer to their peers. Again, just to remind, this is lagged data, so this was pulled in October of 2019, and they'll pull this again in, or of 18, and they'll pull this again in 2019. And you can kind of get a picture here of the enrollment data, of how many students receive ESE services, how many are enrolled in the district, and then the third pie chart there of how many are identified as EBD. So you can see in that orange area that 19 percent of Black and African-American receive ESE services, yet they make up 35 percent of our students who are identified with an emotional or behavioral disability. Racial composition by zone.
Interesting.
And then just another look at the threshold and where we are now. And you can see that it was 3.25, then 3.2, then 3.41. The other area that we're gonna be spending considerable amount of time on is suspension of students with disabilities. So when we got the information from, about CCEIS and the disproportionality, it also included this, and this is a snapshot directly from the paperwork. So these are four new areas that they're going to be looking at. So in-school suspension, under 10 days, over 10 days, out-of-school suspension, under 10 days, over 10 days. Right now, what we're looking at for a risk ratio, there have been improvements, but there's still work in this area. When you look at the red line, which is the threshold, and that's that 3 percent, this year, or last year, the 17, 18, when the data was pulled, we were at 6 percent. The year before, at 10.8 percent. So significant decrease, but still looking for some additional.
Go ahead, finish your thought, I had a question on this.
That's okay, go ahead.
Oh, okay. On this slide that we're looking at now, is there any significant difference between, let's say, or among the various racial groups that you're talking about here, depending on whether they're like primary school versus when we get up to the high school level? Or does it pretty much stay in the same pattern, or is there a significant difference? Do you know?
We've started to go through all of that data, and then we have a breakdown of all of that by area, so I can get that information to you. But for this one in particular, that's not a breakdown with what I've brought today, is not a breakdown through, but we have all of that information. But you can see our other groups altogether, K through 12, are under the threshold, so...
Right, yeah, I'm just curious, because I've taught high school for many years, and I'm just, I don't know, I'm guessing that there may be a real difference among the different cultures. We're talking today about insubordination and how that rate rises as the kids get older, and I'm wondering if we see this in this as well, just out of curiosity.
We do have that, and we have to look at all of those factors and really dig deep into what levels, what schools, all the way down to sometimes what individual teachers maybe need some more training. So we have all of, the data we have doesn't dive down as deep to teachers right now, but we have access to that data. So that's other things that we'll be looking at over the course of this year. And I can certainly continue to share anything with Dr. Atkins, and then he can pass that information on to you, so I will have the breakdown for you.
Yeah, 'cause I'm just, I'm also guessing that some of the disciplinary things may be more, when they're younger, acting out, throwing tantrums, what, you know, those kinds of things, whereas as they get older, it may be more the verbal things, where they're just insubordinate and use profanity to the teachers and that sort of thing.
Yeah.
I'm just guessing that might be the case.
That is definitely true. At high school, that disruption would be higher than any, like the physical or anything like that. Yeah, actually...
We will go, what I'd like to do, we have some information that we shared with the NAACP, which was a pretty comprehensive view of our discipline plan. The chair has a copy of that, but we will share that with all board members. And that is, again, a strong reason why I think the recommendation regarding Dr. Bowhatch is an important one, because that, it demonstrates quite clearly that we need to have a strong focus in this area when it comes to not only disproportionality, but just suspension in general. If you look at the behaviors as they move from elementary to middle to high school, you'll certainly see some trending up, particularly in fighting, insubordination, things such as that. The other striking thing that you will see is the use of tobacco, just from last year to this year. Also, drug possession last year to this year, because of the jewels and the vaping, has gone up significantly. And, you know, all of this, I think, requires us to take additional steps beyond what we have done, so, but we will share that with you.
If you could, that would be enlightening. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan. May I ask why we didn't get the report?
It was our intention to get it to you. We just had this meeting with the NAACP, so we provided it to them, and then you'll get it. You will get it, I can get it to you probably today or Monday.
I guess, I feel that we're sharing this information with the public, that we ought to be aware as board members of what's being shared. So that's one comment. Then I have a bunch of questions for later. Gwen has her hand up.
Ms. Gittens.
Ms. Duncan, can you go back to the slide that says EBD disproportionately for students who are Black and African-American? And I'm trying to understand that risk ratio. So is that saying that the state risk ratio, that is saying that 3.5 to 3.0 students are at risk? And our level is at 3.41? I'm not sure I understand that.
Saying so that anything over 3.0 is considered significant disproportionality? So anything over one could be considered disproportionality? Anything over three is significant? So right now, with our Black African-American students, we, they are 3.4 times more likely to be identified as having an emotional behavior disorder as their peers.
And is there any rationale as to why?
That's part of what we're doing right now, and about two slides from now, we're gonna talk about some of the things we've done and some of our actions moving forward, especially with some of the reallocation and how we'll be using some of that to support some things in this area. We are looking across the board right now at EBD, and some things we've noted as that there might be a number of students, specifically in high school, who had an EBD eligibility when they were in second or third grade that has just stayed with them. But when we've pulled all of their data, we've pulled all of their discipline, their file, their academics, they're not exhibiting that they're a student with an emotional behavior disorder right now, but there might be that the school wants them to continue to get a service so that they can receive ESE services. So in those cases, we need to look at, is there another eligibility area that's more appropriate for those students? Or is it a student that just needs a 504, but not necessarily an IEP where they can get accommodations but don't need a service? So we're looking at every student who has an EBD eligibility, and have asked our staffing specialists over the course of this year to pull comprehensive data for us so that we can look at any student identified.
And is there a correlation between the CBD status and academics? The academics of that child? I mean, I guess I'm thinking, are there some that are labeled EBD that are actually gifted, and because they're not where they're supposed to be, they get the EBD status?
Often, behavior and academic go hand in hand, because we have students who are removed from classes or some things, so then they are behind in academics. Or we have students who struggle with academics and then have a level of frustration, so on both ends. So, yeah, so then when students aren't at that level that they need to necessarily be eligible for EBD, they still may need some support. So we want to make sure that they just have the right eligibility area, and they just didn't get a label when they were younger, and they may have developed some very different strategies, but then they're still here at 17 or 18 years old with the same eligibility area that they had when they were six or seven years old.
Okay, thank you.
We're running, we're starting to run short on this presentation, sorry.
So just to finish up, the areas that we're looking to, we're like, we will have some principal leads in the area of CCEIS, so we will have some support there. We also have some FBA and PBP development, and we're going to look to have a systemic overview of all of our FBAs that are in place, and do something across the district to help support teachers who may not have a lot of background in behavior, and something that will provide them more support and strategies in those areas. And we've been working with...
Jessica, I'm sorry, but what is CCEIS? And I don't know if all of our board members know what an FBA or a PBL.
Okay, great, thank, good question. So CCEIS is the Comprehensive Coordinated Early Intervening Services. And that's basically just the title that they gave, that's right, at the beginning that they gave that if you have a significant disproportionality, you are under CCEIS. And then for our FBA and PBP development, FBA is a functional behavior assessment, and a PBP is a positive behavior intervention plan. And then we're also looking to some changes for student enrollment and the position that we have there, so we can look at students who are enrolling, look at their eligibility right when they come in the door to our school here, and if they need some additional testing to do that, and put that in motion right at that time when they come into the district.
So we are right at the 20-minute mark. Does anybody have any burning questions? I'd ask for later. Ms. Morgan? I'd just like to make a comment about the presentation. I'm not, I don't know that much about this area of education, so I feel like I got data, and I got comments about that data, showing that we improved, but not showing how we improved, where we committed resources to make a change. So I don't see any linkage between where we were and what we accomplished, and any real clean articulation of what our action plans are going forward, and what they will require in terms of human or other resources. So that's just a general comment about the presentation.
And just to give you a little context, this, the purpose of this, this presentation was actually for our leadership team at Summer Leadership, and the purpose was to instill upon them a sense of urgency with dealing with this particular issue at the school level. Upon learning about this from Jessica and her team, I felt it was critically important for the board to be informed of disproportionality and the concern that we have as a school district, that it does impact our IDA funding and the strategies that we're going to do moving forward. I also felt it was, it was support for that position that I talked about as well. So we'll be more than happy to do that. I just felt, in the sense of just urgency to get this information in front of you, that we just take this presentation as it was and get it to you, so you were at least aware of this, and so that you were just aware for your information.
I appreciate the context. And then the only other question I would ask is, where are we gonna take the 15 percent from IDEA? Because obviously, we're going to impact some other programs, so, but that question doesn't have to be answered now.
Well, one of the positive things about it is it actually, it allows us additional flexibility with actually being able to work with some of our students in the general population before they're identified as ESE. So as an example, behavioral specialists, that part of this funding that we're talking about can fund behavioral specialists. Well, now, instead of us having to demonstrate that behavioral specialists are only doing, working with ESE kids, they can now work with other students that are identified as at-risk. So that's, that's an example.
Thank you.
Questions? Really quick. Ms. Jordan? What I wanted to share, to me, what is really bothers me is that we're saying it's 35 percent of students of color, but in actuality, it's really 62 percent, because we're just speaking about African-American, but when you add the Hispanics, people of color, that brings us up to 62 percent. That's pretty sad, that we have that much, you know, those children as EBDs at that 62 percent. And I think a lot of times, too, is that the, and this is really near and dear to my heart, a lot of times, I think that the kids are labeled, that labeling keeps with them throughout their lives, as well as they're labeled with their, they're labeled, and in their IEPs, they have a tendency of putting that behavior in there for some reason versus going to the positive reinforcements, because then they can measure something, even though the child may not even have that.
Jessica, it might be helpful, you're, yes, you're correct. And one of the things, I think, that if you look at our high school students, if you could talk a little bit about, about that, where we have kids that quote "have the label", but are not even receiving services, so why do they still have the label?
Right.
I don't know if you, if you want...
So right now, in the spring, we pulled all of our high school EBD information for every student, regardless of race, so we could take a look. We asked for all of the different information, discipline, academics, and when we were pulling that, we found that there were approximately 145 high school students who are EBD, but only 15 had an active behavior plan. So that right there would be an indicator that that's not a child who necessarily needs an EBD eligibility. Now, they may need eligibility or supports under some other criteria, but that right away was an indicator to us that there was more work to be done in that area.
Ms. Giovanni, we're hearing a beeping coming from your phone. Could you mute when you're not speaking, please? Sorry, Ms. Duncan. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Ms. Duncan, thank you very, very much, appreciate it.
I did, while you were doing tech staff, to try to get you an electronic version of this report, hopefully by the, before we're done, so...
Thank you.
And I did request that this morning when I brought it up in the workshop.
Okay.
I had talked to you about it.
Next, we have the Student Progression Plan with Ms. Houchen and Dr. Quisenberry.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So we had a pre-briefing with this, so there are no major changes from the pre-briefing, so we're gonna go through this pretty quickly, but if you have questions, just let us know. So the Student Progression Plan is, Candace has it, it's pretty thick. And basically, what that entails is you have the Student Progression Plan, you have the middle school course offerings, and the high school course offerings. There's also some information about elementary. And basically, that book lets parents and our education, our educational staff, everyone know what course offerings our district provides. Every year, we have to look at what additions or changes or revisions state statute requires of us, which is why we try to do this as late as possible, even though we start in February. We have to look at changes in the state course code directory, and then Susan Jordan, our behind-the-scenes, has to make all of those changes in the focused scheduling system so that they can begin scheduling courses for the year. So the elementary updates, Bethany?
The only elementary updates, 'cause that big book, our section, I think, is only the first 15 pages. only the first fifteen pages. So, it really just covers retention and, and, you know, third grade and good cause, those sorts of things. And so, the only thing that we had to update was we removed Stanford 10 from retention criterias for K to two. We have not used the SAT 10 for that in quite some time, so we just made that revision, as well as we added in the state recess statute.
For the middle school updates, legislation just passed requiring career planning, so by the time they leave middle school, they have to have career planning, which includes information about high school course offerings and so forth. Rita talked about this a little bit, because she's a big part of this plan for how to, to get students to be able to get this requirement.
So, we were anticipating this legislation before it even became a bill. We were actually planning this kind of exploration continuum in CTE from middle to high school, and we were planning on using My Career Shines extensively throughout our middle school CTE courses. So, I actually have a communication into the DOE just to get clarification based on what I've read on House Bill seventy, seventy-one, to see if our plan will meet those requirements, which I think will be a huge benefit for our students. So, once we have that information, we may have some late additions in terms of courses that we didn't know prior to the bill being passed, but we're very excited to implement them.
Also, in middle school, we cleaned up the language. We have middle school students who want to receive high school credit for Spanish, but we have the concern on the high school end that those students will be prepared for Spanish, too. So, we just made sure that there's articulation between the two levels and that the exams are similar, and so we just put more guidance in there regarding how to earn that credit. And the high school updates, we saw in the progression that biology was not being recommended for students, for Level III students, and we actually crunched the numbers and pulled the data and saw that we shouldn't be holding our Level III students back from biology as a freshman, because over eighty percent of our students that were Level III were able to pass the biology EOC, and so we wanted them to be able to take more advanced courses in science. So, we opened up the door so that more students have the opportunity. And then for our Cambridge schools, we, they have been taking Ace General Paper only as an English elective, but the state allows us to use that as a one-time English credit. So, we're allowing students, we're putting that as a one-time allowance, and we're thinking that, that will also allow a lot more of our students to be on that Bright Futures pathway, and it also can earn the school more acceleration points. So, we feel that's a win for our students. Also, legislation, they go back and forth, and so this change happens like every year. So, we had to include financial literacy with economics. Now, they want economics to be a standalone course, so we had those courses and those academic plans and curriculum maps already made, so luckily, we didn't toss those, because they keep coming back and forth and we just update. The scholar designation, the state is allowing for, for Algebra II or an equally rigorous math course, and so we've given a listing of what those courses are so that they, students have more options. And then Jessica went through and cleaned up a lot of language regarding the alternative assessment that she felt like needed to be more clear in the progression plan. Yes, ma'am?
Ms. Gins?
I'm trying to remember which session, when I was at the FSBA conference, they talked about that algebra and the math, you know, equivalence and all, and replacing it with, was it a coding or something like that? It had to do with, with coding class or something.
In computer science, yeah.
Computer science, technology like coding or something.
Computer science. If there's, if there's an articulation agreement with a college, then for science, as well as some of our math courses, they're able to use that in lieu of a traditional science or math course.
Okay. Ms. Jordan?
It's regarding the Cambridge program?
Yes, ma'am.
I know if they have it in the middle school, and I'm referring to Calusa has that.
Yes, ma'am.
So, when those children graduate into the ninth grade, going into the ninth grade, I heard that there's not enough openings, because I guess they would go to North, would be their feeder school?
That is their feeder.
But if they're in the program in middle school, then we don't have enough spaces for them at the high school. What happens to those children?
That's correct.
Now, they have to start all over again.
So, we are waiting to talk with our chief academic officer, but we do have pricing and we have looked at more Cambridge opportunities for, for more of our high schools, because we do have those wait lists. And it does, it is discouraging to parents to have their child go through the middle school program and not automatically get into the high school. And so, we have everything in place to present, you know, how we might proceed. We have three different options on how we might proceed with that, and so hopefully, we will move on a decision like that so that we do have more opportunities soon.
Thank you.
No questions, comments? Ms. Morgan?
I assume blue means new and red means revised?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, I want to say, I think it's cool that you're doing hip-hop as literature, and I, and, and when I was at Jeff McCullough's reception last night, he talked, somebody talked about how he used Pink Floyd to, in his English classes or somewhere. So, I just, I think that's a great addition, also the African-American history. But that made me think, so when a parent is looking at choosing high schools especially, that mean that the offering is just incredible, how do they know which of these, which of these classes their kids will be able to take at what schools?
So, there is a zone map. There is a zone map that lets them know what specialized programs there are, but in regards to your question, they would be working with that high school. But that's typically, they work with that high school, and on the high school's website, they typically have their pathways, because they, they all try, they're, they're trying to attract more students. We could start putting links into those pathways for the SPP, like that probably would be a good addition to that, so that they can look at those.
So, Dr. Atkins, I've talked to you about this. I still think it's a great idea to take the high schools in a zone and have open houses for those high schools at the same place, at the same time, so that parents can walk around and access information simultaneously, as opposed to having to go to one high school one week and another high school another week. So, I'm just throwing that out there.
Like a trade show.
Thank you.
Ms. Vomo, running low on this.
I'm sorry. I, I know, and I, I'm going to respond to that real quickly, because my daughter and granddaughter just went through that a year ago, and I think it's important to go to the each high school, because frankly, and I won't mention what schools, but they went to one school, and my daughter was texting me like, "Well, what do you know about blah, 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 blah?" Because she was getting not a good vibe, and then went to another one and got a really good, so that's part of it, to feel a connection, and, and it's not that either school was unpopular, it's just, but what Ms. Morgan just asked about the hip-hop and all of that, I just pulled up on my screen, library media, library skills, information literacy. Is that even taught in any of our middle schools? I think it should be.
So, if it is in the course progression, it has been a request from a school to have that offering. So, there is a school or schools, it could be one, it could be ten, but that's what we do, is that they, they have the SharePoint, and they go through SharePoint, and they do their course requests, and then we just triple-check that we're allowed to do that with regulations with DOE, and then we move forward on that.
Well, I ask that because I know what's happened to media centers at a lot of schools.
Yes.
That said, as we move toward our priority, I'm sorry, proximity schools, we're going to need to revisit these catalogs and, and have some kind of equity among what's being offered, so that, you know, little Johnny, "Well, I want to go here, because it has hip-hop," and, you know, they're, they're picking a school on a half a credit, whereas, I know Ms. Fisher will agree on this, most of the schools are eliminating health education as a standalone course, which to me, you know, I know it's fun to do hip-hop, and actually, when I first started teaching, I used Beatles songs as poetry. That's a really long time ago, but, like nineteen sixty-nine. But, I mean, that's, that's a real consideration that the parents do know, as Ms. Morgan said, that they do know which courses are offered in which schools. And, and I think that kind of gives you a take, a little bit of a take on the culture of the school and what the schools value as important versus, "I want to be a popular school and have a cool class." I mean, I would pick a school that has library media skills, not that my kid would, if I had a kid anymore in school, would want it, but do you understand what I'm saying about that?
Do you understand?
Probably not, but...
I do understand what you're saying, that schools are offering similar programs and similar courses. I do believe that our principals do like to have the flexibility, but, I mean, it is future conversation that we can have, for sure.
Okay. Any other? You guys are awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Phase two job study. Mr. Rothenberg. What are your first name?
Hello again, everyone.
Hello.
Hello.
So, our purpose in coming before you this afternoon is really just, in a general sense, to talk about the work that has been done and will continue to be done in reference to job descriptions. You were provided a white paper that pretty, that was pretty comprehensive in the work that has been done and where we're looking to go. And then we also included this exhibit that really was able to walk you through the different parts of the, of the job description. I think probably what I want to emphasize is that, you know, this, we only have, our resource is one person. And so, you know, there's really been a lot accomplished in, in the time that we've had. And really, I'm just here to answer questions, because I believe that the information provided was pretty comprehensive, so I would just like to know what questions you have.
Ms. Gins?
I would just like to say that I really appreciate this format. It really is helpful in knowing what changed. It's a lot easier than the crossing out and all of that.
Right.
So, thank you for all this hard work.
Yeah, you're welcome. Because we will continue to bring things before you, that's why I wanted you to understand the process that we go through. The other thing we are going to do is we're working on our language, because when we say job study, some people imply that to mean something different than what we're doing. We would like to get to a place where we're actually doing job studies, when we have money that we can put with that. So, you know, I just, I just want to say that, that we'll continue to be bringing things forward as we work through this process.
I have one more thing. How do we know, are these changes basically because we, as a district, have decided we need to do this, or which things are required to be done? Is there any way to specify that?
It's, it's, it's both of those things, and we can certainly do that. The initial thing was, we had some job descriptions that hadn't been touched since nineteen seventy-four. And so, the first thing was, what is an industry standard template that would bring us into this century, and, you know, what, what should that look like? And then establishing that so that, because we had, you know, different job descriptions in different formats, that was like start one. But as you know, things arise, we need new positions, maybe to, you know, to address new legislation, or things happen. So, at least now that we've established the format, we can begin to do the work as it comes to us. But when we bring things forward, we can certainly designate the purpose for why we're doing it.
And then also, is there, would there be a salary adjustment based on the additional requirements or additional job duties?
So, when we're adding job, new job descriptions, we do do that work. For existing job descriptions, our initial plan was to go by division by division and do that exact work, but unfortunately, that requires funds, and as you all know, that has been in short supply. So, when we're able to, hopefully, our, we're thought is if we could designate a certain amount of funds that go like into what we call a job study fund, and then we could prioritize where we want to look first. I, I think Mr. Davis over there would tell you that he, he is anxiously looking for some job studies to be done relative to some of the positions that he has. So, that is our hope moving forward.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher, did I see your hand up?
No, you did not.
No? Any other questions or comments?
I would like to say that I appreciate that you presented us with important information in a digestible form, and then you didn't read it to us today. Thank you.
All right.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Where are we? Community Involvement Opportunities. Dr. Carlin?
And as she makes her way, just, I just sent that information to you, so you should be seeing it in your inbox momentarily.
Thank you.
All right, once again, good afternoon. Updates to Board Policy 1.20, Community Involvement Opportunities, were pre-briefed. On May thirtieth, you proposed some edits to the policy, which are in red and available in your backup. So, really, I'm here today to entertain any questions. We have this briefing. We do anticipate bringing this forward, barring any other edits, on July thirtieth at the action meeting, and of course, there'll be a public hearing at that time as well. So, I'm here to entertain any questions you may have. Yes, ma'am?
He's looking at me.
Morgan?
Oh, yeah, I think I sent to Cindy McClung some suggestions for, and it has to do with the application, so not the policy so much, the, the application, that maybe we would, should include some criteria for...
For CSI?
CSI.
Correct, okay.
So...
Would you like to see that in the policy or just on the application?
No, that, just on the application.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to make, let the board know that I had asked Cindy to weigh in on the application with some criteria that might suggest to people in the community that they would be interested with, with, you know, in, in this particular committee, given their experience. So, I just wanted you to be aware that I had done that.
Any other questions or comments?
Are we going to be reviewing the applications as well? I know it's not policy, but...
Yes, so I, you may have received that email that Mrs. Morgan just referenced, so we'd like to get all of that feedback together. We will put those...
Okay, so you're still...
...and, yes, we're still working through that. I think we gave you until next Friday, if I'm not mistaken. We pull those together, and then we can, we can bring those to you, so you can take a look at them, and we want them to be the way you want them to be.
Thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Ms. Carlin? I had sent you that regarding the EDAC?
Yes, ma'am.
And clarifying...
Language, yes. And, yes, I responded back and I believe and said, yes, we would be pleased to do that, for sure. Thank you.
Sometimes I don't believe that they understand.
The unitary status and all that, we're going to give a little more explanation around all of that work, yes.
Thank you.
You bet.
Great. Thank you very much, Dr. Carlin. Next up, we have Hurricane Irma. Ms. Malley, Ms. McFarland. This was a push-off from a previous briefing, correct? Thank you for your patience with us.
Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Atkins. As Ms. Patricia alluded to, we had planned to present this information to you back in May, and we were bumped from that. So, we have provided to you in advance of the meeting, a couple-page summary of the status of our Hurricane Irma situation, the funds expended, and where we're hoping to recover... to recover reimbursements from. And we've provided an update on the amount of funds received to date. Are there any questions or would you like us to go through any of the information?
Thank you. And he just stepped down. Okay. Ms. Morgan, now, I thought the write-up was fabulous, so thank you for that. I wanted to take this opportunity to ask, Ms. Gins, you sent us a, a report about your meeting with, um, Commissioner Pendegras and, and, and you, and, and you gave us some numbers from, um, Dijarlet that had to do with, uh, shelter mitigation grants or whatever. It wasn't clear to me whether there was a conversation about the fact that they owe us a lot of money and where is it? Or this was a, this was a totally different discussion going forward about how money will be spent to harden district facilities and provide shelter.
Right. No, that first part was not a part of that conversation.
Okay.
Um, but, you know, I will mention to the superintendent that we need to have that. I was, uh, not aware of all that information, so perhaps we can share it sometime in a, a workshop or share with the other board members and we can move forward. I think he's coming back. Oh, you're just in time. Okay. Uh, would you repeat your question then?
So my question was about the meeting with Cecil Pendegras and Dijarlet's notes about, um, uh, shelter mitigation grants and they're getting 7.7 million and the district's getting 4.8. And is this, is this for stuff going forward in terms of hardening properties and making them usable for hurricanes? Or is this some sort of number that we may see coming from the county in terms of what they owe us? Uh, has there been discussion about when they're going to pay us what they owe us?
Yeah, it's the, the former rather than the latter is, is my understanding of it. Uh, we are currently discussing with staff, um, the hardening of our upcoming buildings. And so that's something that Scott's been involved in. We had a meeting over at the city of Cape Coral. Um, that went one way. And then we had, uh, we had a, we had a follow-up meeting where, uh, Mr. Dijarlet provided us a proposal. And, uh, I met with the capital committee, um, I think it was last week relative to that proposal. So we're going to come back as a capital committee and consider their proposal. And then, uh, we're going to get back with county staff and hopefully come to a more formalized, uh, agreement with our county regarding school hardening in the future. So...
Well, my question about, you know, the reimbursement for past costs, if we don't get this clarified in terms of who's responsible for what and we go into another hurricane, you know, that we're just stacking these claims on top of without any clear response, designation of responsibility and that really concerns me.
Well, I, and I, I would say that's, uh, shared by the, the county manager and me. I mean, so both of us agree with you. And that's why, I mean, this is the first time to my knowledge that we've even had this level of high-level discussions relative to their funds and our funds. Uh, so both of us have, I mean, Roger and I have agreed that we want a formal agreement between the two entities.
Good. Thank you.
And that might be an area for legislative advocacy next year, cause I know there's appetite at the FSBA to ask them to stop requiring us to have all of our schools be shelters. So that might be an area of advocacy as well. Save us some money and do away with this fight, right?
Yeah.
Any other? Yes?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to clarify some, um, clarify some of the figures on what's already been paid and what's out there pending. Um, especially is the majority of what we would like to get back from FEMA or is it pretty much divided among FEMA, insurance and any other groups?
Our estimated expenditures for Hurricane Irma are about $31 million. Of that, 26 and a half million has been filed with FEMA. However, of course, we first go through the insurance process and receive our deductibles or pay our deductibles and go through that process. Uh, so we have the five insurance companies. We have FEMA and then the state has a share of what they pay for, um, the expenses submitted to FEMA and then the district has an equal share to the state that we, um, encumber or that we pay for. Then we have, um, identified an opportunity through a grant to receive additional funding for those expenditures that won't be covered by insurance or FEMA. And then of course we have the shelter, um, costs and our costs with the sheriff's department and fire department in Cape Coral. And they've received the, the invoices and are aware of those pending, um, reimbursements requested.
Okay, so $31 million was the expenditure on 100 different projects, right?
Correct.
Right? And you said 26.5 million is payable from FEMA?
Not payable from FEMA. I'll ask Ms. McFarland to, uh, explain the insurance process, um, and how it relates with FEMA.
Okay.
So the, uh, as, as Susan said, the first, uh, order of business is to repair the buildings. All of our insurance is on a reinsurance basis, which means we get paid back after we have done the repair. So it's a little different than kind of your homeowners or auto insurance where you would receive money upfront and then do the repair. We have to do the repair and then we submit for reimbursement from our insurance companies. So as those repairs were, have been completed over the past 18 months or so, um, those have been bundled and sent to the insurance company in, in those five different, um, claim, um, dates that were provided in the presentation. Um, we are now, we're beginning to get the reimbursements from insurance. To date, we've received $2 million. Um, I heard this past week, uh, that we have been authorized, meaning the carriers have agreed to forward us an additional $3 million. Those are both advances, um, as we're working to close out the claims. So we've provided enough documentation to the insurance companies to substantiate that level of insurance. We're continuing to work with the insurance claims. And then as those claims are closed out on the insurance side, then they go to the FEMA side. And I'll let Susan kind of pick it up from there and explain the FEMA process with the claim.
So after FEMA is notified of the insurance amount claimed, they reduce that amount from the, uh, reimbursements they give to us. So it looks like at this point we're approximately $5 million will be received from insurance claims. It's likely to increase. And so the 26 and a half million that was submitted to FEMA is right now being reduced by 5 million and then it'll continue to be reduced as additional insurance payments are made.
Okay. Does FEMA have a, um, different requirements in, in terms of the paperwork? In other words, it's my understanding that FEMA requires that we have submitted, um, at least two bids. Is that, is that correct? That, it, cause it says first order of business is to do the repairs. And my question is, I understand needing to do that and in the insurability and, and what you just said, but that may be okay for the insurance companies. Did it hamper our efforts to recover money from FEMA?
No, that has not hampered our efforts to recover money from FEMA. Approximately 75% of our expenditures were performed on bid contracts. In addition, the superintendent had issued an emergency declaration as well as the governor had. So we were in a state of emergency and our school board policy indicates that be, when you're under a state of emergency, you are not required to obtain multiple quotes due to the emergency situation. So, um, that has not hampered our ability to receive reimbursement.
Okay, so FEMA has accepted that.
FEMA continues to, um, find creative ways to...
They have not accepted it. They've accepted it, they've not accepted it, maybe they'll accept it. I'm, I'm just wanting to see what, besides maybe from our county, what we're going to be on the hook for, for...
So one of the determining factors will be a couple of our roof projects were rejected by FEMA and deemed ineligible due to lack of documentation. We had provided gobs of information. I know that's not a technical term, but, um, much, much documentation and sometimes the reviewers didn't want to wade through it. Um, sometimes we did need to provide additional clarifying information and the FEMA process as documented indicates there should be a back and forth and they just decided to have a kick it out and send it to us and, and not, um, allow the, a couple of the projects to proceed. So we are currently in the appeal process for two projects. So, um, with our consultant's assistance, we are submitting appeals and additional documentation and have asked what additional questions do you have because we'd be happy to answer them if you would tell us what they are. And, um, in the past 30 days, I'd say we've seen a high level of, um, involvement with FEMA, starting to ask questions. So we're happy to, um, now being given particular, uh, questions that we are to respond to.
Yeah, and about how much is, are those two, are those roof projects that we're looking at?
They, they total approximately 3.4 million together.
Four, okay. Thank you.
Ms. Gins?
Thank you. So can I just make sure I've, I've got this straight? So unlike private citizens, we would, uh, go to our insurance, we fix it first. Then we present those bills to the insurance company. What the insurance company doesn't cover, we send to FEMA. FEMA then makes their decision as to whether or not they're going to pay it. And so there we are.
And then they submit it to the state and then the state determines which portions they think they should pay.
Oh, my God.
And then anything that anyone decided not to pay comes back to the district and we've postured to have a grant to capture much of that expense.
So, uh, Ms. Vaughn, the discussion about bureaucracy that we were having earlier, this is a good example. Uh, do, this, uh, this process of negotiation and back and forth, um, is not something, we're not surprised by, by this type of interaction, you know, where we have to, uh, appeal and repeatedly communicate. Uh, I think it's important for us as a school district and school district staff to be very persistent in, in what we do. Uh, in our staff, we over-provide, I think, documentation. We, we've learned that that's really the best way to go about it. And then the engaging of the consultant, I think, is something we also did proactively to help assist us because these are people that are expert at securing, um, funding from, from FEMA and insurers.
One more point to make, to follow up on Dr. Atkins' point is I think the last major storm that we went through and had claims, it took between four and five years to have everything wash out. So we're just at 21 months now.
And that was the point I was going to make. I believe it was Charlotte County that was blown apart. They're, they're still processing claims from Char-, uh, Charlie. So this is...
When we started this, Matthew, they were still trying to get, uh, damage paid for from Hurricane Matthew, which had been one or two years prior.
School districts in particular?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, Ms. Jordan?
No, I was going to say the same thing. It just, and homeowners go through the same thing with them because they're definitely going to try to see how much money they can save. But they, especially because of two different hurricanes here in Texas, things are taking much longer because of that. So that's why we're just sitting waiting to say, this is what we're giving you. Thank you for...
Other questions or comments? Ms. Fisher, you look questioning?
Uh, no, I just recently read in one of the, I don't know if it was U.S. World and News report, that it was kind of like the perfect storm and that it will be years in many cases and that we're certainly not alone in this situation with FEMA. They're out the money. Tens and purposes, we're out the money.
Yep, we're now.
You file your claims, but county people are closer. We can get, we can get to them more easily.
Other questions?
I think that's it, ladies. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have a budget update. Dr. Desmoras?
Hmm. Sorry. Good afternoon, Dr. Atkins, members of the board. Uh, we're in, we're in the home stretch now, right? Can we? We can do it. All right.
You're between us and dinner.
Okay. That's a lot of pressure. I'm going to get going, cause lunch was probably very scarce. All right. Well, thank you. We want to run through, um, just a little bit of information on the budget this afternoon. Um, there's a lot of numbers in here, so I just want to make sure that everything in here is clear and give some opportunity to ask questions if you have any. Uh, just wanted to go over, recap some of the things that have happened. The process really did start in January with an FTE forecast to the state of a little over 94,000 students. At that point, a meeting commenced, meetings commenced in February with schools and departments on possible budget scenarios and options to balance what was anticipated to be a tight budget. We briefed the board, um, several times leading up to the release of the conference report from the state in May. Some decisions are still yet to be made with our budget and it will be finalized in the next several weeks in preparation for the last budget brief to you on July 15th before the tentative budget hearing on July 30th. If I can take you to the first page of your backup, this is, this outlines the FEFP calculation from the state that was talked about a little bit this morning. I want to highlight just a couple of things. It seemed like there might've been a little confusion this morning in the talk with the legislative consultants. But our, our important highlights for our county include an FTE increase of over 1,100, a BSA increase of $75 or 1.8% that they referenced this morning, and a total increase of $36.2 million. Uh, but we need to break this down and really analyze what this means. One of the things that were talked, that was talked about this morning was that safe schools allocation or, um, the school safety allocation. So that is, uh, I just wanted to make sure that we, there was a couple of different funding sources, I think, that we're getting maybe mixed up. The safe schools allocation, we've been receiving, um, for quite some time and that allocation typically we use to pay for our SROs, does not cover all of our SROs, so we're still using some general fund, um, funding to pay for that, as well as some after-school programs and of course charter schools, uh, get their piece. The Guardian program money was a different pot of money for this year that had not been, um, allocated for net, for this coming year. And of course that was for those school districts that wanted to participate in the Guardian program, which we chose not to do. Um, so I think this morning, it, it sounded like to me they might've been mixing up the two. But our safe schools allocation, we use to cover our SROs as we have been for quite some time. So I just wanted to clarify that.
So they didn't combine it in this budget? The legislature did not combine it in this budget? It's still two separate pots of money?
It is, it is still two separate. To my knowledge, there was no additional allocation this year for additional school Guardian. Not to my knowledge. Now, of course, we're not taking advantage of that. There was also an additional grant that was offered at the state level this current year for, um, safety initiatives. And we did take advantage of that to do, um, some locks on our doors, the, the red locks or the emergency locks on the doors, as well as the, um, emergency radio amplification systems. So we did take advantage of that as well. So there's a few different safety pots out there. So if we just look at a little bit of the trends, I just wanted to point out a couple of things in terms of our millages and our tax roll. Those blue bars represent the tax roll and that is the increase of the tax roll in each, in each year, the percentage of increase of the tax roll. So our tax roll has been going up each year since, uh, 2013 by some percentage. And, but then conversely to that, our mileage has been going down at the same time. So you, we're not, of course, capturing that whole benefit of that tax roll going up because of the way the calculation works. In addition, when we look at this, uh, comparison of the BSA, the base student allocation, that is, and our per FTE funding, which is represented by the orange bars, you see the difference there. So the per student funding has increased an average of about 2.5% over that time period. However, there is some limitation to that funding and how that can be used. So let's talk a little bit about that. So for example, in this year, our total FEFP allocation increased that $36.2 million, which was a healthy 5%. Uh, but we have to take into account that of that amount, the best and brightest of $9.3 million, um, was part of that increase. In addition, the turnaround school supplement of about, uh, 1.3 million, I believe. Yes, it's one point, closer 1.4 million was also part of that and that is used for very specific purposes. So you kind of have to pull that out of the mix when you're determining what really is your discretionary money to do different things with. So for example, that best and brightest money of 9.3 will mean additional compensation for t- for teachers, but it's not flexible for the district. So, it really brings the percentage of increase to the FEFP when you're talking about kind of discretionary of flexible dollars, more along the lines of 3.85% instead of the 5% at the, at the base number.
So, Dr. Desmoras, please correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, one, one of the things also, although that is slotted for teacher compensation, best and brightest, it is a bonus and not something that we can add to their base salary.
That's right.
You know, what we may consider, what your, the board may consider is, as a part of your legislative priorities, is to try to take those dollars and, and give the board that flexibility, I mean, you know, even if you say, we're going to earmark these dollars for teachers, we just want to be able to have the flexibility to put them into teachers' salary versus it being bonus money. I think that would be a better use of those dollars for our instructional staff.
So, we, so when we're looking at our budget numbers and breaking them down, we work to figure the flexibility in our budget in much the same way as I just described. So, looking at this $36 million breakdown, which was the total increase of the FEFP, taking into account categoricals and things that we must do either by statutory requirement or because that was a priority that was taken on in the district, that leaves our remaining amount. So, the retirement contribution by statute increased, so that cost to the district was about $1.1 million for this year. The district decided to, as a priority, increase the health insurance contribution of employees at a price tag in the general fund of about 3.4 million. And then the salary increases, which again, the district took on as a priority and a very good one in terms of making sure that our compensation was solid for our employees to be able to support, all of those different strategic initiatives that we heard talked about this morning and this afternoon, came at that price tag of about 18.5 million, leaving that total remaining flexibility of about $2.5 million. So, which meaning, of course, to cover inflationary increases, to cover any additional initiatives that the school district may want to take on. That number would not be enough to balance the budget, so we have to, of course, be creative in the way that we approach it in order to make sure that we have a balanced budget for the year.
Can I ask a quick question there?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have, and Chris, I mean, I'm sorry, Ms. Patrica, you may know about this as well, with the categoricals, do we have a way of keeping track of, you know, that, that kind of, you know, we get money in from, let's say, our, grow your own? And is that offset anywhere else by a categorical? So, in other words, is there anywhere where we keep track of, we get this amount from here, 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 and here, and here's the categoricals, and how is that balanced?
Well...
Does that make sense, question?
I don't understand the question.
Well, let me, let me try this, and maybe this will be helpful. On this first page of your backup, which outlines the FEFP allocation, we try to separate out the difference between the categoricals and the flexible funding. So, on the bottom half of the page, you see where we have a section that says K-12 school operations, which would be the flexibility, either that money that we're getting for growth and/or inflationary, and then a section on categoricals, which breaks out that categorical funding. So, we try to separate the two out so that you can see well in the FEFP calculation the difference between the two and how, what dollars are driven in the two categories. Is that, is that what you were asking?
It does, I just think it would be, and maybe it's something we really can't put our finger on, but to be able to say, you gave us a million and you took away 50.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying, and does that make sense?
Uh, yeah.
It's on a line item.
It is, I'm just...
Deduction from there.
So, you're, so you're wanting a different illustration, that's not, a different illustration of what you're seeing here, that kind of shows those things of all of the funding sources, a breakout of possible new flexible funding sources compared to that list of categoricals.
Take care.
Yeah, we can do that, I think you're, you know, that you're asking for just a kind of a different presentation than what you see here, and we certainly can try to do that, yeah. The next page in your backup, page two, shows the budget assumptions that we use for the given year, and I think those are important just to explicitly state so that everyone sees what the assumptions are that we're using. Should these assumptions come to pass, then, you know, then we, then we made some good ones. When they don't, we have to make sure that we are adjusting accordingly as we go along. Many of those assumptions take place in the capital budget, which we'll get to talking about in just a second. So, based on the revenue that we expect to receive in the year, we build these assumptions and balance our budget based upon them. These slides here just basically list out some of our major sources of funding and the descriptions behind them. So, I think it's important for us to note that, yes, the FEFP and the dollar amounts that are associated with each funding source. So, the FEFP is our major source of funding within the general fund, but there are other sources of funding that come into play as well, such as the interest in our investments, our federal indirect dollars, and the transfers that we take from capital into the general fund. So, we just wanted to list those here to make sure that we had a good representation of all the different funding that shows within the general fund. We have a breakdown for you here of the general fund, based on all of the different revenue accounts. As you can see here, the majority of the general fund revenues come from local sources, which is categorized by that purple piece of the pie. And in this slide, we show that 70% of the expenses in the general fund go towards salary and benefits, because we're a very people-intensive business. And 66 of our general fund dollars are at the school level, or 601 million of the 909 million we expect in the general fund is budgeted at the school level versus department or elsewhere. Pages three and four of your handouts deal with the school allocation, because most of our dollars, as we said, 66% of them reside at the school level. And we heard some, some conversation earlier today, I believe Lori Brooks was talking about it, in terms of how the allocation at the school level works, and how it's geared to push dollars into the areas that are considered priorities. We have that school allocation formula for you in the backup, so that we can clearly kind of talk about and delineate where things go. You see references to tier one, two, and three schools. You see references to different types of positions based on what we outlined in the strategic plan, the types of areas that we, that the district principals in those conversations felt were important to where we drive the resources, so that we could make sure that at each school, there was a minimum level of services of different kinds that would be budgeted at the school level. But yet, through the formula, also provides some flexibility to schools to make sure that they feel like they can meet the individual needs of the schools, even within the parameters that we set within the DRA allocation.
How, how do you adjust that? In other words, a school that has a high teacher ratio, you just would work with HR, per se, to move, you know, staff or teachers, or?
So, so do you mean if the school had a higher student to teacher, teacher ratio than what the formula was driving? So, within, within the formula we give, based on the FTE projection, there's a minimum number of teachers that we are saying the school has to budget in order to meet the class size reduction requirement. So, we're not going to accept the budget back from the school if they try to budget for less than what we said the minimum was. If they end up going over, in other words, if they budget the minimum amount of teachers that the, the formula says that they have to have, and their classes are still over or they're not meeting the requirement, then that has to mean that they have more FTE than what we projected. So, therefore, we're going to have to allocate them some more, and their minimum number of teachers goes up in order to keep that ratio level.
Okay, okay. And are we, at one point, we were paying the, the fee, the penalty for being over rather than worrying about staying within it?
So, there were, so we, I don't believe we've ever actually paid a class size penalty. There, there were times in the early stages of the implementation of the class size reduction, that penalty was assessed, but there's a process for appeal and submitting information to show that either you had some type of unanticipated growth, or you had some other difficulty where you could appeal off that penalty. We've always, in the cases where we were assessed a penalty, were able to successfully appeal that penalty. Now, I'm talking specifically our district schools. There may have been some charter schools that paid the penalty, but that, that's within their realm.
I think I could, and I don't know, Amy, if we paid the penalty or not, but we had a situation in Pine Island where we chose to, instead of add an additional unit, just to go ahead and, and allow that class size to increase, because it would have been difficult to recruit another teacher to that particular building. A great teacher at that grade level, and so working with the school, I think it was determined that, that we would allow that class size to, to get to like 23 or 24, whatever it was. And if a penalty was assessed, we would pay it, but I did, that's the only one that I can recall.
Yeah, that, I believe that was also in appeal process, based on the growth pattern of Pine Island in that relatively isolated area of our district, and we were able to successfully appeal that, if I remember correctly.
Okay, thank you, I couldn't.
Thank you.
So, then, the, the next pages of the handout, pages five through nine, I believe, lists our federal funds, both entitlement and competitive grants. Each of, each of the grants, a small description of how those grants can be used, what the allocation was in FY19, and an estimate of what that grant, what we're estimating that grant to look like in FY20. So, we just wanted to make sure to provide that information, because the grants play such a vital part of how we can integrate them into our budget in order to supplement the key strategic plan initiatives that are outlined for us and that we've heard so much about this morning.
I'm sorry, I'm smiling at you, because last year, sales tax was not a guaranteed source of revenue.
What, I know you see it in there, that's right, right? So...
I look up there and I'm...
Yeah, yeah, very exciting when we look into the capital area, and in the handout on pages 10 through the end, there's a couple of different things in there. First of all, the capacity projections for the next 10 years, I believe, which is what is driving the planning or the budgeting for two school rebuilds and five new schools within the five years of the capital plan. I believe you all are familiar with our two rebuilds in Cypress Lake Middle and Franklin Park, and then our five schools, three being in the east zone and two being in the south zone over the next five years. And as Ms. Patrica mentioned, yes, the building in of that sales tax revenue within our capital plan, and then the separate sales tax plan that goes with that. We have an ISOC committee meeting coming up next week, in which we will be sharing with them some different reporting for the sales tax plan, that we kind of worked with the committee to come up with. And so, we'll be piloting that at our next sales tax, our next ISOC meeting, and be sharing that with the board at our next time together as well, if we are successful with the ISOC and they like the reporting that they see, in terms of breaking down the projects on a quarterly and an annual basis, and giving them an update as to how those projects are moving forward. And the capital plan is where really you see a lot of the initiatives related to safety, and there's a whole category for safety in the capital plan, as well as, which is in safety, in the safety category, and then also in the category for maintenance of our existing schools as well. E, yes, ma'am?
So, I just wanted to make a comment, you were talking about ISOC. I've heard from two different people in the community who are on that committee, a little bit of concern that some of the committee members don't understand the purpose of ISOC. They believe that they are there to make decisions about how the money is spent, as opposed to providing oversight with respect to the district's performance on the plan. I think it would be helpful if somehow, you're the rep...
Well, that shocks me, because we've had lengthy conversations, and, and everybody agreed, consensus was reached, or a vote was taken, actually, that they would be taking a prospective look, meaning, what are the projects you have coming up, and do those projects fit the categories? And then a retrospective look to say, yes, the money that you spent fits the categories that were approved by taxpayers. I mean, that was a motion that was made and passed, so I'm not clear where...
Was that at the very beginning?
Yeah, but the conversation came up at our second meeting as well.
Yeah, it came up in the second meeting as well.
Yeah, what's happening, I think, is that there's scuttlebutt outside the committee, because some people have not either bought in. And that may be, that may be a problem.
I have heard that as well, though.
Yeah. You know, I'm just, I'm just mentioning that.
Well, can I just say that maybe with our, you know, updating of all of our advisory board information, that we make it, you know, very clear in the application and then the, all of that, so...
That's fine, but I'm, I'm, I'm concerned that there's scuttlebutt.
I'll raise it, I'll say it was raised at the table and...
Okay.
And I have one, one question. On the pages that have grant projects, are we, it has the F20 estimate, are we pretty confident that we're going to get those?
Yes, but until we actually get the award, the grant is awarded from the feds, it, it is an estimate until we receive the grant award, and then we build it into the system. The, you know, the entitlements are just that, and usually, you know, they, they, you know, come on from, from each year. There was some discussion about Title II this year, and whether the federal level was going to appropriate those funds or not. But the last conversation that we had with the state, they sent out the information and told us to, you know, prepare the budgets and prepare the requests for the award, so we continued to do so. So, at this point, you know, I have to say that, yes, it is an estimate based on, you know, what we know, and it feels pretty firm, but of course, until we get the award, we can't say for sure that, you know, that's, that that is the award. So, trying to be comprehensive yet concise, hopefully, we got through that, and, and that was all, we were able to fully explain what we had. Just wanted to list next steps for you, knowing that that leads up to our tentative public hearing on July 30, and then the final public hearing and final adoption of the budget on September 10, through the public hearings, as per the requirements of the state statute. So, I am ready for any questions that you may have, and hope that that was pretty comprehensive and yet concise.
Questions, comments?
I still drive into my neighborhood, I've been living here seven years, and I still drive into my neighborhood at least once a week, and I'm like, oh, my gosh, I can't believe I live here. I live in paradise. And I kind of feel the same way about you being back at the district. Every time I see you, I'm like, oh, my gosh, I can't believe she's back, I'm so happy she's here. So, that hopefully, and likely, will not wear off, so you're going to have to get sick of hearing me say it.
Well, I, I really appreciate that, thank you. It's, it's very good to be back.
Glad you're here. And thank you very much.
Okay.
We're good.
All right, I, I think I'm next too for the audit update.
You're next too as well. But I have to keep my computer close, because my battery's dying.
This...
Go ahead.
May I? Okay, so, this one, there was, there was no backup material, I just wanted a quick conversation with you to give an update on the current audits that we have going on. Three different ones. First of all, we have just kind of the follow-up of the operational audit from 2016, 2017, which is the one that we're still responding to findings on. We created the Google Doc, as we had discussed last time, so each of you should have access to that. The last updates to that were, there were two findings, the findings number two related to the $3.9 million, and I believe it was finding number one related to impact fees, but those two findings related to impact fees and the $3.9 million on the $1.5 million. We responded to both of those findings. The one find, the response to the finding about the $3.9 million use of the $1.5 million funds, we did submit that response to the DOE on May 31, as per their request. And I do want to say here publicly that we received a lot of very much appreciated and very... very necessary help from our school board attorney. Chris over there was really very helpful in terms of helping us pull some information together, helping us document things, helping us get references to laws and statutes, and we truly appreciated his help on that response. So I just wanted to say aloud, thank you very much, Chris, for that help.
Thank you, Chris.
So we were able to submit that finding on May 31st. We had the impact fee finding that we submitted on June 4, and we are still awaiting response from DOE on both of those. We also did receive this week, I believe on Tuesday, a request from the DOE on a response to finding number eight, which was the school volunteers and the documentation behind those. That response has been prepared by Carol Wookiee and Sherri Freeman in our, within our school volunteers and our constituency services group. So we are reviewing that response and will be sending that off to the DOE by July 10, which was what their request was. So that's the update on the 2016-2017 operational audit response to findings. We have two audits that are still now ongoing. We have the 2018-2019 financial audit. That financial audit is being performed by Moore, Stevens, and Lovelace, which is our outside auditors that we consult with. They came onsite probably about a month ago, and they did some fieldwork here. They are no longer onsite, although they are still doing work from their home office. They will be back onsite probably towards the end of August after our fiscal year is done and close to closed, and they will come and finish up their fieldwork at that point in time. So that one is ongoing.
Is that our regular CPA audit that's required?
That is our regular financial audit that is required each year. Every two years, it's done by our outside auditor, and then the third year, it's done by the state, right? And then we have ongoing as well, a 2018-2019 operational audit, which is being performed by the state auditors. We have five of them onsite now, and they are performing fieldwork. They have been asking for various information, which we have been providing. And of course, there's no, you know, documentation or anything of that right now. They anticipate that they will be here through the end of July, performing their fieldwork. And it's just very hard to say when, after that, we can expect a report from that. So we just know that they've told us that they plan on being here till, towards the end of July, doing their fieldwork for the 2018-2019 operational audit. So that's our update on audits, and I'm ready for any questions you may have.
Seeing none, I think we're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. And we have Mr. Rickenbacher with a capital project update. Mr. Rickenbacher, this question has come to my mind three times today, and it's completely unrelated to anything you do, but you might have the answer.
Yes, you can save a lot of money with GEICO.
That was good. Can impact fees, not for us, but for a municipality or a county, be used to construct sidewalks?
Say again?
Can impact fees be used for sidewalks? Do you know?
I can't say specifically, but I wouldn't want, I wouldn't see why they wouldn't. The impact fees are based on the development, which are supposed to be providing the infrastructure as a resource for that development.
Okay.
Amy shaking her head.
Amy shaking her head, no, they can't be used for sidewalks?
This is Florida.
No, I'm not talking education. I'm not talking on our campuses, I'm talking a municipality or a county. Can they...
You're not talking about schools?
No, I'm not talking about schools.
This is the county.
Oh, okay. Wait there, okay.
Impact fees could be used for roadways and roadway infrastructure, sewer piping, water piping. That's in their easements, so I would assume they typically put sidewalks in their easements.
Right. Just, I'm just curious. It's completely unrelated, I'm sorry. Please start with your capital project update.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes.
So I think that the short answer is it probably depends, but oftentimes, yes.
That was very lawyerly of you.
I apologize, but you know, in my experience, I've, you know, I think that, you know, it depends on who owns the sidewalk that's gonna, or the land where the sidewalk is gonna be installed, because FDOT is very possessive of their property.
That makes sense. Okay, all right.
If it's local, then probably yes.
Okay, good. That's just, I was curious. Thank you.
I'm gonna take a wild guess here.
You threw him off.
That's not it. All right, anyway, we're going miniature. This is the June 20th, 2019, capital project update. This was actually done for the beginning of the month when we normally had briefing, so a lot is changing all the projects. First one up, you'll see Eastone Middle School MM. We are officially engaged with both the construction manager and the architectural firms, and we've already had three design meetings in place. And, sure, thank you.
You're welcome.
I knew it. Thank you, appreciate it. We actually even invited the EOC to come and discuss shelter for MMMM, and we're creating another meeting where they'll be next week to come and give us more finite direction so that we're not spinning our wheels in our design process. But they anticipate and want that school as a shelter as well. So that's MMMM. Then we have Eastone High School MMMM. This slide is, again, a little bit old. We are now out on the street for bids. 100% design documents were completed, we're out on the street for bids, and Suffolk is gonna be presenting the school district with a GMP July 15th. My anticipation is I will gain FFNE costs from both procurement and from IT, put that together into a total project cost, and I'm gonna guess, if I have permission, I can come good cause to you folks, with a total project cost for MM at the July 30th board meeting, with an anticipated construction start the second week of August.
Yes.
Okay? And we are, right now, we're responding to comments on that project from the Lee County DOT. We're anticipating that final release of that report and our approvals for all the roadway and the entrance and the easement encumbrance. Then we plan to do our final presentation to those communities down in the Gateway Area, so that'll probably sometime early August.
Okay.
Any questions?
Let's get a quick one. When we had that meeting with Pendergrass and Dejolay, and I think Roger was talking about the extra lanes to go into the schools, and especially MMMM, have you all discussed that? Because we, the question did come up about doing it sooner than later.
Yes.
I mean, they're out there right now with the equipment, so why not do it now?
It got to us, obviously, they hold all the reins. We are making all of our, their recommendations part of our plans, and they will be actually in the bid documents when they come back with a GMP. So yes, all of the DOTs, which they all work for Roger, all of those comments are being applied into the drawings.
And what's happening with the, not the turnabout, that's English, the roundabout?
There is a roundabout that will be the entry point for that school, and we're waiting on the final approvals from DOT. Part of their responding to our comments, we submitted, they had comments, we've addressed those comments, and we're waiting for the final approval.
And will that be off of 82 or off of Griffin?
It's on Griffin.
Well, there is an entrance, though, off of 82?
No, there's no entrance off of 82 into the school. This roundabout is on Griffin and facing the actual property. It's a recommendation from FDOE.
Can you raise a question for me? So are we, are we paying for longer turning lanes going into MMMM?
As a developer, you're required to pay all of the impacts to get access into your property, meaning turning lanes and signals, based on the impact you impose on that roadway structure.
I understand that. They paid, the county paid for the extension of those turning lanes at Pine Wood's, right? That's not something we paid for, that's something they paid for.
I don't recall, honestly.
Didn't they pay for that?
I can't speak to Pine Wood's.
I'm almost 100%. It's right outside my neighborhood, I'm almost 100% certain the county paid for it.
If it's a county road, and maybe there wasn't enough turnoff lane, and it was causing a traffic hazard, they may have taken it upon their own budget lines to make that safe and extend it.
So who determines what's necessary in terms of the length of a turn-in?
It's all with traffic, we have to do a traffic study. Actually, it gets validated by an independent company as well. We send that into them, and the traffic counts and the traffic studies are what predicate whether you need a signal, how long, what your traffic coming in and coming out, what time of the day, onto the surface roads, how long those turn-in lanes have to be for stacking. The intent is to keep everybody out of the active lanes. And the problem is with the light that they put at Griffin and 82, we couldn't put another light, it's too close to the existing light, and it would have caused major backups. So, and there wasn't enough area between the neighborhoods that are across the street, there wasn't enough area in the median to provide those turn-in lanes. So the traffic circle was the preferred method by the county to accommodate both our entry and exit, as well as the community moving through Griffin.
Will they widen that section of Griffin coming off of 82, though?
I can't speak to what the county will do, but no, that's not part of our construction plan.
And then along with the additional lanes and all that, one of the things they did talk about was tree line and, what is it, the middle school that's on tree line?
Elementary.
Oh, tree line? Yeah, we just did a traffic study, and actually, we have, what we believe, when we implement this, and we just talked about it at our capital committee, is we believe we can accommodate most of the stacking, get them off of the surface road and into the project, where we may not need to do any extension of that existing turning lane.
And the traffic studies are on our dollar?
Yes, we paid for a traffic study. They provided, they did traffic counts, they observed, they provided recommendations, they provided some rough sketches of how we reconfigure our front lots for stacking and moving parking elsewhere on that school site. And when we get to that point, when we will move forward with a project, obviously, we'll have to come up with full-blown plans, and if there is any impact on tree line, if I do extend it slightly more for some capacity, I will have to go to the county. But I think what we've presented to the super so far is a pretty good first step.
And originally, the, that's actually within the city limits, because it was Said Kasimi that actually came to us with that request, but we also discussed it, as you know, with Roger Dejolay, so when we were meeting with the county, so... But the concern there with the stacking out on tree line is, you know, the traffic backing up, and it is intended to be one of the north-south corridors that relieves some of the pressure off of other roadways, so the free movement of that traffic is imperative for that to occur, and so that's one of the reasons why we felt also, you know, this traffic study was important, and if we could do something in an economical way, that's probably the way we should proceed.
I agree.
So I think we'll make a final decision at our next capital committee. Or am I confusing that with the other one?
The other one.
Help me out, thank you.
Okay, so the big important takeaway from MMMM is we're looking for a board approval for our total project cost and a GMP, hopefully July 30th, and hopefully put the shovels in the ground, second week of August. Lehigh Senior, I've told you that we've had some schedule delays throughout the course, and I told you, don't get concerned unless you see me get nervous. Well, I did an impromptu field visit, and I did get nervous.
Uh-oh.
Nope, you're good, though. Subsequently, we had a meeting with the construction manager who worked with us. They brought it back, where all areas will be done by August 2nd, substantially complete, spit-shined, ready to go. They've hired a second project manager, so that they can keep one project manager on a new addition, and the other one to focus his efforts on the interior work. And two of the renovation buildings will be done in the next two weeks, occupable, spit-shined. The other two portions, which is the main building, one administration, that's the last piece of the puzzle that's gonna come in on August 2nd, where we did the front entry, secured it, and redid the clinic to accommodate the additional space. Right now, that picture doesn't do justice, the roof is on, we've got all the duck work on the second floor hung, all of the duck work and electrical roughing on the first floor is done, all of the sheet rock framing in the new addition on the walls is up, the sheet rocks there covered with plastic. We're gonna be taking the scaffold down, which will allow us to put the windows in in the next week, hopefully. Hopefully, we get our concrete breaks on Friday and can start drying the building in. So they're already pulling much of their resources and have met my commitment, so I'm no longer concerned.
Good news.
And Idabaker Central Energy Plant, commissioning, we're in the commissioning phase there, you can see how that turned out just from the pictures, it's going well. The Phase 2, which was going under Aguilinda Boulevard, that pipe work is complete, and we're actually back with the pipe work all the way into the Idabaker site, getting ready to connect it into the CEP. The chiller has arrived and has been placed. The new 2,000 KVA transformer to support all this new load is in place and online. We have another phase where we do have to shut it down and put in some safety measures because the power out on the Cape with LCEC is very unpredictable and can damage equipment, and we found that over the course of our progression. So we have some safety units that we're putting in, but we have to kill the power to put them in line. And the cooling tower is set in place and operational. And that's the presentation. I do have a change order update also was attached to your presentation. Were there any questions on that?
Change order update. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so, trying to remember where I saw this, where are my notes? There's a $405,000 adjustment to a contingency account for something in here.
Okay, let me open that up.
Oh, yeah. Kristel, Lehigh, senior addition in renovations, reconciliation of buyout.
That is actually money that they gave back to us, and we put into contingency during the course of the buyout in the GMP. There were many of the GMP items that we have to put an allowance against.
Okay.
We didn't get competitive bids coming in, so we park an allowance in the GMP, and in the buyout, we actually saw those savings come back. So that $405,000 has been injected back into the project in the contingency line, and actually, some of the changes, we had $180,000 contingency on this project. There were several changes that were requested to be made from a curriculum perspective. That additional funding that came back in helped support paying for that.
Okay.
So all those dollars go back into the project.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? I think we're good, sir. Thank you very much.
And the audits for Bonita Spring High School are all complete, so we did very well.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is public comment. For anyone from the public who would like to make a comment? Seeing none? The next item on the agenda is board member comments. I will start with Ms. Fisher.
I have no comments today, thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
Um, nothing really, no.
Ms. Jordan?
No, thank you. No, thank you.
Ms. Vaughn? Ms. Morgan?
So I've forgotten names already, and I can't find it in my notes, but I, Ms. Patrica and I went to the foundation closeout of the Golden Apple?
Mr. Malloy.
Mr. Malloy.
And the other rock star teacher on...
Jim Crow.
That's it, thank you. Jim Crow.
They are awesome. They are awesome. They, I mean, it was a fun evening, anyway. It always is.
I was laughing so hard.
Well, my stomach hurt. I mean, it just, it was, it was a terrific evening, and it was really great to see our own staff doing a lot of the work there now. So, I mean, from what I heard, there's, you know, a lot of the work is being done internally. So I just wanted to comment that I thought that was a, that was a great finish, and if we can find any way to use those guys on an ongoing basis, we ought to figure out how to do it as a district. You didn't see it. Gosh, it was so funny. It was hysterical.
You know, I heard it was really, really funny.
And pointed in some ways, yes.
Hmm?
And pointed in some ways.
Yes, oh, yeah.
Dr. Carlson used to be a writer for Bill Maher.
Oh. Oh. Okay.
Really good. Mary wants to comment.
And now, I will say something, Dr. Carlin and I are very proud of Mr. Malloy, he used to be one of our students and peer mediators, so...
No kidding?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it is. Those are my only comments. Um, okay, I have, uh... I'm sorry?
I said it's great when they come full circle and you get to see it.
Mm-hmm. So thank you to our chair, Ms. Gittens, for coming up with the idea of giving us each a project, because mine was safety and security, and I met with the expert staff in that area this week, and they're awesome. And the idea of executive session to discuss where we're headed in terms of some of our safety and security issues was raised, and I think it's important that we pursue that. I think we're waiting on some legal opinions from Attorney Williams before we can go into that, and I did get an opinion from, not Attorney Bierman, but the other one?
Mr. Gabriel Allen.
From Attorney Gabriel, and he indicated that executive session would be appropriate, given the subject matter we have to discuss. I don't want to go into too much detail because it's appropriate for executive session.
Right.
So if, Madam Chair, you could get with the superintendent and schedule that at some point, when Mr. Williams has that information... staff and our superintendent for the incredible presentation that you gave us today for the future of the district. I remember when I joined this board, one of the very first presentations was Vision 2020, and I was all brand-new in my seat and not really knowing what to expect. And I had read the backup materials, but the people, the staff that came forward, gave life to that and made me realize, holy cow, I am really surrounded by some very capable, very professional, very good people. And I just remember sitting here being like, this is it, this is what I'm here for. And I have that feeling again, as I read the backup materials and the people came forward, and they gave life to your plans going forward. I'm feeling like we are poised to really, really accomplish great things for our students. So, thank you for all of the work that went into all of that, and I'm excited about the future. Those are my comments. I think we move next to the, let's start with the board attorney.
Oh.
If you have any comments, please.
No comments from the board attorney, thank you.
Okay. And superintendent?
Well, my only comment is, thank you for that, for the recognition of staff. It is certainly a team effort. I will have to tell you honestly, the last couple of weeks have been extremely energizing. The administrators' meeting that we had, and Ms. Gittens was there for the start of that. I wish you all had been there for at least the end of it, but, you know, we'll try to get that to you. It was very inspiring. Some of the changes that we're making, I'm excited about them. We wanted to set some pretty, pretty bold goals this year, and I think staff really went to work and did that. And when you, when you do that, you get excited about the work ahead. So, that's, that's where I'm at today. So, thank you very much. I knew it was a long day, but there was a lot of stuff that we really needed to get through, and I certainly appreciate the board's patience.
It was a long day.
Can I just make the comment about the video at the end? And I think it's very powerful, so we're working on trying to get that for the board meeting on Tuesday, at least to show it.
Great. And now, we'll move on to good-of-the-order. I do unfortunately have a good-of-the-order item, and it's kind of two parts. The first is, we as a board need to decide who our legislative liaison to the FSBA will be today. I think we should reach consensus today, and then I'm willing to make the motion Tuesday night to appoint that person. But, but in conjunction with that, I think we need to have a larger conversation about the role of legislative liaison to this board. Coming out of that role, I sent you all an email this morning, I don't know if you had a chance to read it. Coming out of that role, having served in that role for two years, I can tell you that it is not a real thing. Like, it's not a real thing. It's...
What does that mean?
The chair does most of the work. And that doesn't, that doesn't make sense to me. Having, having had interactions with other organizations, that is, it makes sense to have somebody on our board, when we're as big as we are, and the legislative issues are as big as the ones we have to deal with, it makes sense to have somebody other than the chair be completely focused on that. So, I sent you all an email asking you to, this is not against you, this is not against any chair, this is just an observation of, of the lack of, like, I never knew what to do. Am I supposed to go to that meeting, or am I supposed to step back and let the chair do it? I think there's probably some confusion on behalf of our lobbyist, because she answers to you, but does she answer to the chair and the legislative liaison and all seven board members? You know, like, defining the role, I think, will make us more effective as a board in terms of legislative advocacy. Am I making sense? So, I guess I would ask all of you to take a look at that. I didn't give you a lot of, a lot of time, and maybe we can discuss it at our next meeting, and perhaps think about, you know, whatever changes you might want to make to it. So, that's one piece. And then, the second piece is, I would like to recommend Ms. Jordan as our legislative liaison, because there is no place you can go in Lee County where everybody doesn't love her. Everybody loves Ms. Jordan, and you have significant experience in that role of advocacy from your hotel, and, tell me the other word?
Florida Restaurant and Lodging.
There you go. From having done that. And just watching you interact with our legislators, it's amazing. Isles don't matter with you. Like, everybody loves Debbie Jordan. So, I think, I think if we present a happy face, we're at least starting off the right way. Anyways, my recommendation would be, so.
And can I say that when you did send that and I read it, I personally was interested in it, because I was the second or whatever, and I didn't get an opportunity to do very much this year with the legislative piece. And so, I would just throw my hat in that I really am interested in that position as well.
Ms. Morgan?
I will support Mrs. Tom. Debbie Jordan, I don't know where I got that from. Debbie, because I think that she is, just like you said, I mean, everybody responds in a positive way. She has a style, she's knowledgeable, she gets what it is that, you're not political, but you know how to manage people, and I think you do a really good job, and I'd love to see you take it on. So, I would second the recommendation.
If I may, I mean, I do have the experience with the Florida Restaurant and Lodging for 20-some years, as well as the Country Club Managers of America, and that was with our legislators here and in Washington as well. So, I do have the experience. And thank you both.
Explain, you said it's not a real thing, kind of...
I didn't really, I didn't really do anything, like, for instance, Fisher...
So, what did you do when you went there?
Can I give some context?
Please.
Okay, so...
I'm not understanding.
So, for, when I first got on the board, Jeannie Dozier was the liaison, and she ran it for the board, and it didn't matter who was the chair, whatever, she ran it. To a certain extent, when she went off the board, Steve picked it up, but he was really busy. And then, 18 months ago, we had that change in lobbyist. And that's when I think we really lost, we lost track of who was doing what with whom, because the lobbyist works in a very different way than Bob Serra does. And so, whoever was working with, had been working with Bob Serra, had to have been thrown by the way of work of Carol Green and Ashley Starsell. So, I think this is a great time to have that conversation, because we really don't have a way of work with respect to the liaison, and it's simply because of how we've transitioned over the last year and a half. So, I hope that provides some context for you.
Yeah, and I looked through what Ms. Patrica sent, but this would be with School Board Association?
FSBA, really, all of, all government entities. It would be the sort of the primary lead person, our lead liaison, our, the person who makes contact, like, when we want to have a half-penny sales tax put on the ballot for a special election. It would be our legislative liaison that would go with the superintendent and meet with the county commission. I didn't extend it as far as...
Okay, so, it's not, it's a, I'm trying to understand. I'm not quite understanding what, so, it's, it's not just Tallahassee, it's local, it's comprehensive, local, and...
Because if we're going to do it well, I feel like we, we need to be comprehensive about it, because things, things will fall off your plate. If you're, like, if we have you be state, and you be federal, and you be local, there's a lot of interconnected issues that will fall by the wayside. If we have one person taking a, you know, a comprehensive approach to legislation and to advocacy, I feel like we're in good shape. Now, this does in no way, shape, or form preclude any one of us from interacting with our legislators and scheduling lunch with them, or doing whatever it is that we do in terms of those relationships we've developed. And there may be times when the legislative liaison looks and says, oh, I don't have the best relationship with this person, because I live in North Fort Myers, and she lives in Estero, so, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make sure that she meets with that person. You know what I mean? Just sort of our, our team captain when it comes to legislation.
Okay. Before I can say, well, I'm going to support so-and-so or so-and-so, I would want to see us really define the role, because I, I don't think, I think it's premature to say, well, at the next meeting, I'm going to suggest whoever, because I don't have...
So, we've, we've got two things here. I'm sorry, I'm not explaining myself very well.
So, we have to define the role before we nominate somebody to do that, right?
So, there's two parts to this. We need to have a name to FSBA, just FSBA, just FSBA, by July 1st.
All right.
And I'm recommending Debbie for that.
All right.
In addition, we need to have a larger conversation about the role of the board's legislative liaison, and I will be recommending Debbie for that as well, just, but...
Okay, but that second piece...
So, all we're doing on Tuesday...
Okay, now I get it, because I...
My bad.
Wasn't sure, I thought it was all one thing. So, what we can do is that, is the FSBA, we can do that next meeting, but we need to work on defining if we want a board liaison legislatively, and if we want to include not just Tallahassee, but municipalities, Zandor County, that, we have to define it before we even think about who we're wanting to do that.
And, see, most organizations do have that. It is one person, because that way, they can keep control.
I'm not even debating that. We have to know what that one person is responsible for doing, and I'm not willing to even talk about who, for that role, until we see what it is.
Ms. Fisher's pointing her finger at somebody.
Well, I thought that the board attorney was looking, were you trying to get her attention?
Yes, Vice Chair. Yes, thank you. Is that me? I just, in reviewing, in reviewing the, you know, the idea, the concept, I do think that, that it should be included in a policy. Whatever, whatever role is going to be fashioned, I think, should probably be policy, assuming that it's not anywhere else.
So, then, so, we're looking at three meetings of discussion about the role before we reach a decision, but for Tuesday, do, can I have consensus, or do you have another question?
I was just going to say that historically, whoever did FSBA as the legislative liaison did the rest also. Did the, that was the state, sort of, and then, there was the federal component, and then, we had an alternate. No, I thought, you're muffled.
I can't, I'm by the phone, but is any better? I was the alternate, so I wanted to speak up about that, that I had been the alternate, and I only got to do a little piece last year when Ms. Patrica had to leave, we kind of tag-team a meeting or something last year.
Director's, that's a separate role.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I recall when we, back in November, when we decided on roles, and, and maybe Dr. Carlin and them can help with this, but they were, there was the legislative piece for the, for the federal, and then, for the state, and FSBA, I don't know if that was on there as well, but there were different things out there, so...
They were put together.
No, what you're asking to do is to put them together.
I believe they were put together at that time.
No, because I was an alternate.
Because we had already appointed them.
When we were at our first meeting in November.
You were already appointed the previous July, so, that particular, right?
We should continue it.
No, because we did, back in November, because you were the federal, and I was your alternate, and then, you were the state, and she was the alternate.
Well, today, all we need to come up with is FSBA legislative liaison, and it sounds like there is an appetite to continue this discussion going forward. So, should we direct the board attorney to draft something for us to consider? Otherwise, I'm afraid this is going to fall off and not be important. And we're, we heard our lobbyists today say we're 87 and a half days away from committee. And one of the things that I've learned is that school board member presence during those committee hearings is important. So, I'd like to see this decided. I definitely have a sense of urgency with regard to advocacy and legislative liaison and deciding, yes.
Yeah, I do, too, and I have some comments about this. So, further to you, I'd like to be able to address my comments to the attorney, but copy the board, so that you know where I'm coming from, just so you know my opinion.
But not respond.
But you can't respond to me, so I'd like to be able to do that.
Maybe all of, all of us, the way we've done in the past, when somebody's been writing, changing something, that we each send something, and then, the attorney or whoever puts things together, because what are we looking at, then, all the levels of legislative? Is that what we're saying? Or, I mean, we still have the possibility of splitting it, so that it's not just one person doing national, state, and local? Because with local, we have, we have a lot just locally, with our municipalities plus our county commissioners. So, I would just assume we look at it in a couple different ways, and then, discuss and vote on that.
Vice Chair, if I may?
Please.
Through the Vice Chair. From Ms. Morgan, I, I understand the, the idea with regards to making sure that your input gets heard and it gets communicated. I think I'm a little bit concerned, given the, given the nature of what it is we'll be bringing forward about whether or not you should CC the other board members, just because we know that it's going to come before you, or as a board. So, I'm wondering if there's a solution, if I can't come up with a solution maybe before I leave today, that might be able to allay your, you know, your idea. I do think that compiling, you know, having all of your input compiled is definitely important and necessary, and needs to happen. And that definitely can happen. I just, I want to maybe just look into it a little bit more about whether or not we should do that with this particular item. That's my only concern.
I think we should have a conversation.
I agree.
I'm just assuming, based on what I've heard, that we're not going to have that conversation, and I just want to make certain that...
That it happens.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. I, I think that, and I guess I'll just put it out there, the way that I'm thinking about it, is, you know, we're talking about potentially developing this policy, which we know is going to come before you to be decided upon, so if you're going to, if you're going to have comments on the policy, I think that they should probably be on the record, because my concern would be that we're making, we're making a record that should be at a duly public, at a duly noticed hearing, simply because we're talking about the input that would go into the policy. It's a little bit different than other communications that we have.
So, I would like to suggest that we schedule a meeting Tuesday before the board meeting to discuss this.
I don't see any issue with that.
It just has to be, it has to be advertised within what, four day, oh, it's a workshop?
Uh, let's see, special meeting is...
I don't know if we have enough time.
Yeah, we may not have enough time.
I don't think we have enough time to schedule a workshop.
Well, I'm raising a good-of-the-order now, so why can't I, why can't we raise it as good-of-the-order?
Well, it's a...
He's working on it, let's see.
We don't have to have a special meeting.
It doesn't have to be a special meeting, because we're not voting. We're just scheduling a workshop or briefing, however you want to call it.
Right. However, whatever we decide on Tuesday as to who does FSBA is basically just laying the groundwork for that person to be over everything.
No.
Oh, no.
No?
It's not... Well, if, if after, if the discussion says that one person does everything, then, once you have assigned on Tuesday the person for FSBA, then, then it is. I mean, you're saying that, that it's done.
Ms. Fisher?
So, just as we are liaisons to the, to the different committees and to some of our community agencies, the legislative liaison is that person, but we all still really need to keep in touch with our legislative delegation and our local, you know, county commissions and local municipality governmental officers, just as we always have. So, I mean, I think that's an ongoing thing that all board members engage in, but one person has their name on there, and they're like the spokesperson for that, for that period of time when it comes to the legislative priorities.
And what is, what is the period of time that you're...
Here.
Two, two years.
For FSBA?
Well, that would be part of the policy, though, wouldn't it?
It's been two years.
Well, yeah, we agreed on that, but that, they ask you for a name every year, right?
No, because she, because she's, because she's been moved up, that's why. I think it's two years.
Yeah, it is two years.
No, no, that's the board of directors, that's different. We got to get that, too.
Yeah.
I'll be quiet. Okay. I don't know.
Vice Chair, if I may.
Please.
Just to answer the question with regard to the special meeting, it, it is to date, two business days that you need. The, the special meeting has to be requested either by the superintendent, the chairperson, or the majority of the school board, and then the agenda would be provided two business days prior to said meeting as well. So...
So, there would be tomorrow and Monday?
Yeah, yeah. Thursday, Friday, let's see, in two business days, you'd have to post it.
Can we check with Jen and see when she can post it?
We should text him.
Okay, because that's going to be if she can get it in in time.
So, what are you looking at, being here at 3:00 instead of 4:00 o'clock on Tuesday? And Superintendent Dr. Atkins, is that, does that work for your schedule? I don't think you need staff, do you?
No, I mean, I don't need staff for that meeting, and I'll check real quick here. Yeah, I have it blocked.
So, shall we seek consensus, so that the, the majority of the board can call for that meeting, as opposed to...
If I may, before, I just want to make sure that we're clear on what it is that, that we're going to be needing to provide. So, I'm understanding, my understanding is, and please, anybody correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is what we'd be discussing, and what, what our office would be providing is a policy that would speak to the role of the legislative liaison on behalf of the school board. Is that correct?
Not for the meeting, no.
The meeting, not for the special meeting?
No.
Okay, all right.
We just need to talk about it before we give you direction to develop a policy. That's how I understand it.
Okay, yes.
I think we're all brain fried right now, and it's too hard to have that discussion right now, so fresh brains on Tuesday, I think. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
But in the meantime, can we not do, not, not the CC thing, but what we've done with other things, like to Dr. Carlin on input, we don't share that, but we send it to her, we each send her an idea, and then somebody, and maybe it's not appropriate for the board attorney to be doing this, but then somebody puts together those things to kind of guide our discussion, so it's not just a free-for-all. Does that make sense, or maybe...
I'm looking at the lady in purple out there. She usually does that.
I'm good with that.
Great. Any of your schedule permits? Okay, good.
I do understand.
You're the one.
I just got a text, so it doesn't meet the news press required deadline, so we're not able, yeah, we're not able to do that.
On Tuesday.
Tuesday.
But are we allowed to add an hour to our briefing that already exists on Tuesday, and have the conversation for good of the order, so we can get the name to FSBA?
What time's the...
Well, we add lots of hours to our meetings all, all the time, so...
And they have the briefing at, what, 4:00 to 5:00?
Yes, that's going to run us into the board meeting, so...
No, if we start at 3:00.
Well, we can't change the time, it's publicized already.
We can't change the time.
The start time.
The start time.
Okay, we can't change the start time. And if we do something at 3:00, then we have to have it publicized at least two business days. I mean, we can do a special meeting if that's, if it's of urgency.
It's the urgency.
I mean, we're, well, we're 80-something days away from committee, and if we're going to do a policy, it's going to take lots of weeks to get the policy done.
It's going to take at least three meetings.
Can, can we just, can we sort of commit to each other, that we won't spend more than 45 minutes on this topic?
No.
What do you mean?
As long as somebody's gotten our input and has the ability to structure a facilitated conversation.
All we're doing is giving direction to the attorney, we're not making any decisions, we're just giving direction to the attorney for three more future conversations on the same issue, right?
Well, I'm understanding it, that we're going to be giving, the intent is to come up with direction to the board attorney on a draft policy that will then go through the, the policy process.
That's right.
Which requires us to discuss it over and over and over again.
Right, right.
So, why do we need then to meet to do that?
So, since you brought that up for good of the order, and, and we, I didn't hear Mrs. Giavinelli, but we're all in agreement that we would like for the attorney to do that, and we need to give a name for FSBA on Tuesday, we'll have time that day to decide what that name will be, and then pass it on, and then let, let the rest of the process go, so we don't really need extra time.
That's not what I'm hearing Ms. Morgan say. Ms. Morgan is saying that she doesn't feel that the board attorney has the direction he needs to put together a draft policy right now, because he hasn't heard from all of us.
Oh, he has, is this?
Right, okay, right.
All he has is what I sent, which only reflects my views, instead of the views of all of us.
Okay.
And in the time it's taking us to decide when we're going to discuss this, we could have discussed it.
We could have had this conversation.
Can we just bring this up during good of the order on Tuesday?
Mm-hmm.
Are you good with that? Are you good with that?
I'm, I'm kind with that.
Ms. Vaughn?
Will we have a facilitated discussion based on what we've, the input that we've made?
No, we can't do that, because...
Well, then I'm not good with it, because I, I really think this is a cart before the horse, and I'm not saying that I'm not going to support your person for liaison, but I'm not going to support anybody for the big liaison position, the broader one, before, before we hear the, the actual policy.
I think what, what Ms. Patrica is saying is that the appointment Tuesday will be grandfathered with respect to the new policy that we create, right?
If, if the policy states that FSBA, and the state, and the fed, and the local are all in one person, then yes, but all I need on Tuesday, all the FSBA needs on Tuesday is FSBA, that's it, that's all we're deciding.
I'm good with that, but the waters have been muddied here, we're talking, somebody's talking grandfathered, somebody's saying, "Oh, it's going to be the same person automatically." Somebody's saying that it's, it's too many, Debbie, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, I'm not voting on anybody except FSBLA, or FSBA, for the larger position that we're talking about, until we have a policy. And I, I don't think it's appropriate that you've already put forward your nominee, and basically had a second to it, and then trying to lead us to the fact that, well, historically, it's all one person, and let's just do, I, I don't think that's right. I have a problem with that.
I don't agree with everything that's on this piece of paper, so I don't know that that's, that's where we're going to go. I mean, we haven't had that conversation. I will say that I believe if I vote for somebody for FSBA on Tuesday night, that is not a vote for any of the other positions. And that's what I mean by grandfather.
That needs to be clear.
That's, that's what I mean by grandfather, that we will still have to make a decision about the other positions, and if for, for a two-year period, or a one-year period, they're not in sync, then they're not in sync, but I don't believe we can commit on Tuesday night to something that, that's where I'm coming from.
So, in the future, whoever is appointed to FSBA may indeed just do that for the year, and there would be possibly another person until it all syncs up.
Or not.
That would cover everything or not.
Correct, that's how I'm...
So, can we, from what I'm understanding, all you would need is a good of the order to discuss it from the dais, and then to talk about, the, the piece missing is how do we get information then to the attorney? We've got to have somewhere to start. So, can I maybe suggest looking into other districts that have that one liaison person, or has different ones, and present us, we would have your presentation, we would have something from a district that has just the one person, and possibly another district that has more than one person in that position, and then we would have a place to start.
I'm having a hard time finding that, I tried to find it.
There are no other district that is doing this?
Not, not in policy.
Yeah, not in, they do it in protocol, not in policy.
And we don't have it in protocol.
We don't have a protocol, right.
So, are we looking at a protocol or a policy?
The attorney's recommendation is policy.
That, that was the recommendation that, that Mitch Allen and myself could, came up with, but I think that, you know, I'm willing to look at, you know, whether or not it can be done as protocol. You know, the, the only thing at this point that I care about is that the discussion happens, you know, on the dais, that we get the input, or that, that I receive input from you all individually to present to you with regards to, you know, ways forward. Like I said, policy was the recommendation, if we want to look at it as a protocol, if that's the consensus of the board.
So, can you send us whatever information you have? We look at what Chris has, has presented, and we decide as good of the order that we're going to go forward to do the pre, the briefing, and the, or whatever we're going to decide, if it's going to be a protocol or a policy, or if you can get us that information.
So, what, so what I think we would be doing is, we would be doing a little bit of research to see what districts have one legislative liaison, which districts have multiple legislative liaisons, and presenting options about whether, about what a policy would look like, and what a, what a protocol would look like.
And what a protocol, yes.
Okay, and we want to, we want to do that for Tuesday.
As good of the order.
As good, for Tuesday, as good of the order. I just want to make sure that I've...
Sounds awfully planned to be a good of the order item, but I'm not sure that's permissible.
Well, I don't know, is that okay for good of the order?
I mean, I think it should probably be its own agenda item, it sounds like it.
We just don't have time to do that.
Yeah, that's, that's my, that is my two cents.
Ms. Morgan?
So, we vote Tuesday night on FSBA, and we schedule an agenda item for July, when is it?
15th.
15th, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Present motion.
Ms. Vaughn?
I just want to go on, on the record, saying that I believe it was inappropriate to bring up this other position, and already nominate somebody for a position that doesn't exist, and then have somebody virtually second it. I know technically, no, it's not a second, but it sounds like it was planned, it may not have been planned, it sounds...
Absolutely not.
Excuse me, I'm, Debbie, I'm speaking, I'm just saying to, I'm just going on, on record as saying it seems calculated and planned, and I don't think personally that it was appropriate to bring up a name, when there might be lots of other people that are interested in doing it, and...
FSBA sent us the information out a while ago regarding the date that that needed to be done.
I'm not talking about FSBA.
Talking about FSBA.
I apologize, I, there's no scheme here, there's no desire to do anything other than communicate as openly as humanly possible. I've been working on this email for days, I've been researching for days legislative liaisons and other school boards across the state and across the nation, I've reflected on my role for the past two years, I've spent time with everybody at this, there was no desire to do anything other than try to make a decision as a board, so that we can be very effective going forward for our children. I, I take your input, I give you my apologies if I did not express myself clearly, but this was not, this was no conspiracy to do anything other than...
Don't need, don't need to apologize.
Help us move forward as a district and as a...
I'm, I'm just saying, I don't think it was appropriate to bring up the other legis, I'm not even talking about board association.
Do we have any other comments, or suggestions, or I see Attorney Chris, if I knew your last name, I would refer to you more formally?
That's totally fine, that's, attorney is, is formal enough. Too formal, maybe. I just want to make sure that, I, I think I have what, what our assignment is, I just wanted to make sure that I'm clear on the deadline, and if we do have consensus to do what it is that we've been talking about as our assignment.
Mary's gone, do we have enough people to reach consensus? So, the July 15th, we're going to discuss this as an agenda item, do we have consensus for that? Thumbs up, thumbs down, thumbs sideways?
I won't be here, so...
But you can, you aren't going to participate by phone?
I will be in Trinidad.
Oh, okay.
I don't know, I'll see if I can, you know, connect by phone, I'm not sure.
Okay, I, I will, I plan to attend by phone, so... Okay, so I think you have consensus. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Done.